Good morning, everybody. Let me go ahead and call our regular Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I do believe we have Vice Chairman Shirley on the phone. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning.
And then we've got Mr. Sims-Hauser here as well. So we'll go ahead and begin our agenda. We do have an invocation that will be done by Mr. Bowen Udo. If you can come forward, sir. Let's all rise and then we'll stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance by Stephanie McCarthy after.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are grateful today for the opportunity to come to this meeting and participate in our local government, and we're grateful for the rains that we have had on our lands. We'd like to ask a special blessing that our leaders and politicians can make the best decisions today that will benefit the county, and blessed we will all be able to travel back to our offices and homes in safety. And let thy Spirit be with us today in this hazy season, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Ready, pledged. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. County Manager. Beth, good morning as well, staff that are here as well. I'd like to just welcome everybody here also that's joining us by livestream if we have that over the Internet as well. Good morning to everybody. Let me go ahead and we'll go ahead and start off with our Public Health Services District, which is held in conjunction with our board meeting today. Item one, following a public hearing, discussion and possible approval for Clinical Services Division to change the fee from $12 for chlamydia treatment to $0 after paying for testing. So with that, I guess we'll I'll go ahead and open up for public hearing. Maybe at the beginning, Mr. Saxon, if you can kind of provide some information, and then we'll go ahead and ask for public for comments for the public hearing.
Good morning, Chairman Supervisor and (laugh) good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Chairman Shepherd and Supervisor Sims-Hauser and Supervisor Shirley. This first item is one that is of public health significance in that we have people come in for chlamydia testing, and that's a $36 charge for the testing and then $12 for treatment. Several people have said they can't afford the treatment. So what we're asking and what the hearing is about, should we change that $12 treatment for chlamydia to zero? The cost, our cost for treating chlamydia is 17 cents, and we've had six cases that we've treated this year. So it would be a loss of $72. We think we'll probably have another six cases, so it's less than $150 in lost revenue. But we feel it's important to treat these people so that we don't have chlamydia spread throughout the county. Also attached to that was treatment for syphilis. We haven't had any medicine to treat people for syphilis, so we haven't been treating people. Syphilis is on the increase in the state. For an example, we've had, I believe, 35 babies born with syphilis so far this year. Five have died from syphilis. Syphilis is very treatable. In our county, we've seen syphilis among some of the older people and not among those that are childbearing age. And treatment for syphilis is four cents. And this is all due because you approved us to have 340B pricing, which gives us a tremendous discount when we purchase antibiotics for treatment of chlamydia and syphilis.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Saxon. With that, we'll go ahead and open up public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to provide any information on this public hearing? It's now open.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Shirley.
Yes, sir. I was wondering, what's the recommendation? You know, what would be the recommendation after we get out of public hearing, coming from the health people? You know, what would be the recommendation? Should we go with it or not go with it? Or what would it do to the budget or to ta, 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 ta?
Okay. I'll, Mr. Saxon, if you can provide some information on the direction.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Shirley. The impact on our budget would be very minimal. It'd be less than $200 for the budget cycle. Our recommendation is for approval of this item, that we don't charge for syphilis or for chlamydia or syphilis treatment.
Treatment, okay. Supervisor Shirley.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, with that, let me call for to the public again for public hearing, second call. Is there anybody wishing to provide some information on this? Third call. Okay, with that, there is nobody here for that wanted to make comment on the public hearing that was provided to the public for three calls. So with that, let me go get a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close public.
So move.
Sims-Hauser, motion, second. Shirley, any further discussion? If not, call for the question on closing. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Okay, with that, the possible discussion and approval. What are your wishes, gentlemen?
Move that we approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Shirley. Sims-Hauser, second. Any other further discussion? Hear none, seen none? We'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, 3-0 vote. Thank you. Next item.
The second item is discussion, possible approval of an agreement between Patch County Public Health Services District and Arizona Local Government Employee Benefit Trust and Rural Arizona Health Group Trust to provide flu and pneumonia vaccines and services. This, if approved, this would be our second year for doing this. We provide flu and pneumonia immunizations for county employees and others that are members of these groups.
Okay. All right, with that, is there, what are your wishes, gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Sims-Hauser, mixed motion, second.
Second.
Supervisor Shirley, seconds. With that, any further discussion, questions? That, call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, 3-0. Okay, item three.
Item three is a renewal of a five-year grant for our WIC services. We've been providing WIC for many years here in the county, and WIC is the only part of this agreement that we participate in. There's also breastfeeding, peer counseling, and farmers' market nutrition program, but we are just participating in the WIC program right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Saxon. Gentlemen, are there your wishes? Move to approve. Motion by Sims-Hauser, second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. Any further discussion, questions? Hear none, seen none? Okay, call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, 3-0. Item four.
Item four, we request discussion and possible approval of the professional services agreement with Burnham Mortuary to provide reliable backup for removal of human remains from the location of death, and this is budgeted for in the current budget. We have one death investigator, and he's on call really seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and he needs some relief. He needs time to go on vacations, take weekends off once in a while. And right now, we have been working with Burnham, and they have been removing bodies from the location of death. So we would request discussion and approval of deciding to give our medical legal death investigator some time to have off and relax and have, yeah, we'll be able to pick up the human remains.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Saxon. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Supervisor Sims-Hauser.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. Any questions, discussions? Seen none? Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, 3-0. Item five.
We request discussion and possible approval of the MOU with Navajo County Public Health Services District and Maricopa County Department of Public Health identifying the roles and responsibilities of each party as they relate to the registered dietitian services requirement set forth by the Arizona Department of Health Services. And this is a requirement in our WIC program to provide counseling for high-risk infants and approval of new of formula for these infants, special formula that infants may need. Several years ago, the state decided not to fund us to have a registered dietitian. We contracted with Navajo County. They had a registered dietitian. Their registered dietitian resigned, and so they had to go to Maricopa County to use Maricopa County Registered Dietitian. So we need a registered dietitian, services of a registered dietitian for our WIC clients.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Saxon. Gentlemen, is there a motion?
Move that we approve, sir.
Second.
Supervisor Shirley, Sims-Hauser, motion and second. Questions? Seen none? We'll call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Item six.
Item six is discussion and possible approval to eliminate a vacant home health nurse LPN position range 40 and a vacant secretary position range 24 and create a full-time, 40-hour-per-week public health nurse RN position range 56 and fill the newly created position if approved. Now, these funds would come partially from the 32-hour position that we currently have budgeted and then from Health Department contingency funds.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there a motion, consideration?
Move to approve.
Sims-Hauser, motions? Is there a second?
Before I, before I second, Mr. Chairman, this, these, we have the funds, the Health Services District has the funds to fund this new position, right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shirley. Excuse me.
Okay. With that, then, go ahead and second.
There is a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hear none, seen none? Go ahead and call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, 3-0. Okay, with that, is there a motion to adjourn our health meeting? Is there a motion?
So move.
Shirley, second by Sims-Hauser. All in favor for adjournment of our Public Health District meeting? Say aye.
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 It's unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
Next item is our public meeting and agenda for Patch County Library District held in conjunction with our Board of Supervisors meeting for today. Two items. Suzanne, we'll go ahead and start with item one.
Morning, Chairman and Supervisors.
Morning.
Discussion and possible approval of the acceptance of a check from the Alpine Area Library Friends in the amount of $4,409.78. This is a reimbursement for the purchase of four laptops to be used by Alpine Library patrons. Those laptops do stay in the library. They don't get to take them home and go anywhere, but they're to be used in the library.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Go ahead and move, we approve.
There's a motion by Supervisor Shirley, second. Sims-Hauser, second. Any further discussion, questions? Seen none? We'll call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, 3-0. Item two.
Discussion and possible approval regarding the strategic planning process for all seven libraries, which includes all future planning. We do this, the libraries cycle through every three years to do their strategic planning. There are usually about two a year that we end up bringing to you, just trying to streamline the process so that we're not every six months bringing the same item to you, basically.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Sims-Hauser, motions?
Second.
Second Supervisor Shirley. Any further questions, comments, discussion? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Okay, that we've disseminated our agenda items for the library district. Is there a motion to adjourn the library district meeting?
So move.
Sims-Hauser, motions?
Second.
Supervisor Shirley, seconds. All in favor for adjournment, the library district? Say aye.
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 Thank you, Supervisors.
Aye.
It's three, unanimous. Okay, with that, we'll go to our regular Board of Supervisors meeting agenda. We have several items that are slated on our agenda, so we'll start with our County Manager. Item one is your consent, so.
Yes, gentlemen, Chairman, members of the board, this is the consent agenda, items A through F, and we'd recommend approval.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
Sims-Hauser, motions? Second.
Second.
Shirley, second. Any further discussion, questions? Seen none? We'll call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Okay, item two.
Yes, Chairman, members of the board, this is discussion and possible approval to increase the amount within the contract agreement with Bruce Greco, natural resource liaison for an additional $15,000. Mr. Greco has completed his contract for the for the amount approved, and this would allow, this would allow him to work through December if so desired.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Sims-Hauser, motions? Is there a second? Second? Okay, I'll go ahead and second for discussion. Is Mr. Greco here?
He is, he is not here. I thought he was going to be here, and I don't see him at this time.
Okay, I guess my question is, I hear, I heard you say that he completed his contract, and this is an additional contract till the end of December?
That is correct.
For, for his, I guess, wage or his compensation? Is that how this has developed?
That is correct.
Okay.
So the, so the contract was through, is through December, his original contract was through December, but not to exceed $45,000. Given additional duties that were requested of him throughout the year, that $45,000 did not, has not, has been completed, or they've gone through that amount. And so to get him through is about, it's about $4,000 a month we're seeing right now, and that is the request for the 15,000.
Okay.
For September, October, November, and December.
Do we have any final products of the contract that was required or the finished products or any type of report by Mr. Greco on the $45,000 that was contracted to?
We do. Many of the, many of the, the services he's provided have been working with the, the group out of South Korea on the, on the Sanders Corridor in that area for finance, for economic development. He has worked significantly with NACOG on different economic developments there, and he's also worked with the Forest Service in opening up areas for, for logging and that as, as for our different loggers and also not only that for the firewood processing that we've done.
Okay, so this specific request is for the additional $15,000, that's for his compensation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't know if you have, can share some of that information with us, with us Supervisors as to report on the $45,000 that has been used and as far as some of the goals and accomplishments that we've attained from his services? I guess I'm looking at that. I haven't seen anything yet, so I'm just going to make that simple request if we can do that. And then also...
You'll have it today, sir.
Okay. And then other things that we're looking at from here till December on the, how the $15,000 is going to be utilized for the continuing contract, some of the goals and accomplishments that he has from here till December on this?
That'll be set forth, too. Also, please do realize that if this contract is agreed to, if the board does not see fit for having him sent to these different events and stuff, we can tell him, we can pull him back at any time we want to. He, he works at our leisure or at our desires, and so as you, as you move forward and look forward, if we look at those goals and stuff, and those are goals that you don't want, or the board would like to refocus in a different area, we can do that, too.
Certainly, I think that would be something we can propose on a, on our next Supervisor's agenda.
Okay.
For a report and update by Mr. Greco.
Will do.
All right. Any other questions, Supervisors? We do have a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Shirley.
I would tend to agree with the Chair, and then we need to look at some of the products, the end products of what, you know, the contract is about. And I don't know if we have the monies to supplement the contract that is, that is in place at this point, and, and that would be my input.
Chairman, members of the board, if, if it is the desire of this board, we could, we could table this item for next one to have a presentation given in, in October. That way, the board could give direction to Mr. Greco, and we could move forward at that time with this, this increase.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. If that's the wishes, we're tabling until next month to get an update by Mr. Greco himself.
Could I make a comment?
Mr. Sims-Hauser?
Yeah, Mr. Ryan, did we get all the time-sensitive papers and responses to some of the projects, like the Wolf and stuff like that, done? Or is that what, one of the things we're waiting on for Mr. Greco?
The Wolf issue, I have, I have yet to see any product from the Wolf issue itself. The forest issues, I've seen significant work. He's working with the different groups in that area. I have not seen the final product on the Wolf. That does not mean it's not been submitted as of last week, but I have not seen it as of now.
Did he still have money up to last week, or was it still August 8th that he ran out?
He ran out two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago? Good, thank you.
Okay. What are your wishes, gentlemen? You want to call for the question, or you want to substitute that with the tabling motion for, to have that discussion called?
Chairman, I would, I would suggest maybe a tabling.
Say that again, Mr. Shirley? Tabled, you say? Supervisor?
Chairman, I, this is Supervisor Shirley. I would suggest maybe a tabling.
Okay, there's a motion to table by Supervisor Shirley. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that before we move forward as far as getting some of the final products, so I'll go ahead and, we'll second that motion until our next meeting. Okay? Sir, okay, call for the question for tabling until next month. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Got two in favor, one opposed. We'll take this action item up on October. Hopefully, we'll have Mr. Greco here, get some of the final products, and also some of the things that we're looking at down the road with this item. So with that, this item is table until October. So next, next item, item three, Assessor's Office.
Good morning, gentlemen. The Assessor's Office has discussion and possible approval to hire Barbara Gomez to fill the vacant Certified Chief Appraiser position with a starting salary of $58,000. The requested salary to be funded with existing budgeted funds, and filling this position will not affect the budget nor cost the county or assessor any additional funds.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Sims-Hauser, motions? Is there a second?
Second.
Supervisor Shirley, seconds. Any further discussions, questions, comments? Seen none? We'll call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, Superintendent of Schools.
Good morning, Chairman Shepherd, Supervisor Sims-Hauser, Supervisor Shirley. I have two items for you this morning. The first item is a request for approval and intergovernmental agreement. This is for internet access between the consortium who buys the large bandwidth and disperses it to our schools and also to the county. This is a renewal, and would request your approval of that.
Thank you.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Shirley, second by Sims-Hauser. Any further questions, comments? None? All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. Next item.
This item is a request to cancel school district elections and appoint and authorize the appointment of persons to be filled the required work of the paperwork, the positions for the following districts. That's St. John's Unified School District, three seats, three four-year terms. Concho Elementary District, number six, two four-year terms. The Alpine Elementary District has two four-year terms. The Vernon Elementary School District has one two-year term and one four-year term. The Round Valley Unified District has three four-year terms. The Chinley Unified District has two four-year terms. The Red Mesa Unified District has one four-year term, and our native JTED-CTED, new acronym for that, by the way, one representing the Chinley District area is a four-year term, and the other one representing the Red Mesa District area. Those seats have candidates that have completed all the paperwork, and no need to have a contest there.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
So move.
Sims-Hauser, motions? Is there a second?
Second.
Supervisor Shirley, seconds. Any further discussion, questions? If not, I'll call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams. Next item, item six, Engineering Department, Crosby.
Good morning, Supervisors.
Yes, sir.
This is a discussion and possible approval to approve an amendment, amendment number one to an IGA with, between Apache County and Arizona Department of Transportation for the project where the IPA is 15-0005714-I. This is amendment number one. This is our Stanford Road project that we have been in the process of designing for the past couple of years, and we are nearing the end of that design process. This is practically bid out. That, in that process of design, our engineer who is contracted through ADOT to design the project does engineering cost estimates for the project, and in that process, we've had to modify the limits of this project somewhat. We also, in an attempt to keep the length of our project consistent, found that we had a shortfall of funds. Working closely through NACOG, who had some additional funds available, we petitioned the NACOG Board to grant us some additional funds, which they have agreed. That has been processed and approved, and we are now requesting those funds be added to this project through this amendment to the IGA. Approximately $75,000 is what they had available. So it increased the county's match by about $4,200, the 5% match, and we would recommend approving this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Action?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Shirley.
The amount quoted by, you know, is the 4,200 is what I've heard. On the agenda, it says 4,400 additional county cost, which is the figure, and where are these monies coming from to, you know, for that additional 4,400?
Okay, Mr. Crosby.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shirley, thank you. That's a very astute question, and I apologize for not being clear on that. The total county match is $44,015. When the board approved this IGA, JPA, initially, the cost was around $3,900, and so when we added the $75,000 federal funds, it increased our federal match or our local match, that 5.7%, or that additional $4,200, to the $44,015. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shirley, thank you. That's a very astute question, and I apologize for not being clear on that. The total county match is forty-four thousand fifteen dollars. When the board approved this IGA, JPA, initially, the cost was around thirty-nine hundred dollars, and so when we added the seventy-five thousand federal funds, it increased our federal match or our local match, that five point seven percent or that additional forty-two hundred dollars, to the forty-four thousand fifteen dollars now. Does that answer your question, Supervisor?
Then where, where is the, the money is coming from, you know, to, to, to pay the match?
Yes, sir. Those funds will come out of District Three, HRF.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, I'll call for the question for approval. What are your wishes, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye.
Chairman, I don't-
Oh, hold on.
I apologize, I have a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Okay. All right. I am, I stand corrected. There's a motion by Supervisor Sims Hauser. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We do have a motion, live motion now. I'll call for the question for approval. If there are any other questions, so, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Beth. Item Seven, Human Resources.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisor Shirley, and Supervisor Sims Hauser. Today, Human Resources requests discussion and possible approval to extend the temporary employment of Genesis Brusino for an additional one hundred and eighty days.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Sims Hauser motions. Second?
Second.
Supervisor Shirley, seconds. Any further discussions? See none, hear none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Item Eight, Treasurer's Office. Marlia?
Good morning.
Good morning. Happy September. Happy Navajo Nation Fair as well. The Treasurer's Office, discussion and possible approval to extend the temporary employment for Natalia Scar Bra for an additional one hundred and eighty days effective August fifth, twenty eighteen, and we do need her for our tax season.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Motion Supervisor Shirley, second by Sims Hauser. Any questions, further discussion? Hear none, see none. So I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, three in favor. Item Nine, Treasurer's Office again.
Thank you. Treasurer's Office, discuss, discussion and possible approval of a certificate of removal and abatement of taxes pursuant to ARS forty-two dash one eight three five one. Total to be abated fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty cents. Total interest to be abated ten thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents. Total fees to be abated for a total of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy cents. A list of parcels included in the abatement are available in the Treasurer's Office or on the agenda's backup material on the county website.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen?
Move, we approve.
Motion by Supervisor Shirley, second by Sims Hauser. Any further questions, comments? See none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Item Ten, Elections. Canvas.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board.
Morning, Ms. Romero.
This item, first item is discussion and possible approval of the canvas of the August twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen primary election.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move, we approve.
It's a motion by Supervisor Shirley and second by Supervisor Sims Hauser. Any further discussion, questions, comments? See none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Next item, Elections Department again.
Request approval to cancel the special district elections and appoint the persons who filed the required paperwork to fill the positions for the following districts: Alpine Fire District, Concho Fire District, Greer Fire District, Nutrioso Fire District, Vernon Fire District, Alpine Domestic Water Improvement District, Ojo Benito Water District, Alpine Sanitary District, Little Colorado Sanitary District, Northern Apache County Special Healthcare District, and White Mountain Community Special Healthcare District.
Okay. Gentlemen, is there a motion? There's a motion by Supervisor Sims Hauser. Second?
Second.
Supervisor Shirley. Okay. I do wanna make a quick notice here. I know we've scratched over the Gannato Fire Department. We do have McCarlo as well from the Gannato Fire Department, and several weeks ago, he brought to my attention and wanted to, I'm not sure if we are achieving the request. I was gonna ask if Mr., Mr. Roanhorse can come up on this. Is this the item we were talking about?
Number twelve, number twelve, sir.
Okay. I, I guess I stand corrected here, okay. All right, so I'll, I'll wait till that question for the next item, or the item, item twelve. Okay, there is a motion and a second, so I'll go ahead and call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, item twelve.
Request approval to cancel the special district election and appoint the persons who filed the required paperwork to fill the positions for the Gannato Fire District. The Board of Supervisors may determine the process to, to determine terms for each candidate.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Supervisor Shirley motions, Supervisor Sims Hauser seconds. Okay, I'll go ahead and hold my question. I guess that, that was my question on the first one, so. Is there any other further discussions? If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. Thank you.
Would the board like to draw by lot? I've got all names for the Gannato Fire District. In speaking with the Fire District, we have noted that all four, pardon me, all five candidates were wanting to, the four-year term. We have three four-year terms available and two two-year terms. So in order to determine who will get the four-year terms and who will get the two-year terms, I figured that maybe the chairman may want to draw.
Okay, I guess we'll go down the list, starting with Mr. Titty. Correct? Is that how you wanna?
I do have, I will be putting Larry Noble's name in there.
Okay.
Stephen Key.
Okay.
Laverne Joe, Althea James, and Margaret Etty.
Okay.
Okay, and then I, I would suggest, if the board would like, the first three that are drawn will give the four-year terms, and the last two will receive the two-year term.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and just for time's sake, it may be quicker just to draw the first two, and the first two that are drawn would take the two-year terms, and the remaining three would take the four-year terms.
Okay.
If, however you choose to do it.
Okay. Mr. Larry Noble. The remaining will have the two term, two-year terms. Okay. Thank you. All right. All right, with that, thank you. We'll go ahead and move down to Item Thirteen, Emergency Management. Chief Deputy?
Good morning, Chairman Shepard.
Morning, sir.
Supervisor Sims Hauser, Supervisor Shirley. Emergency Management requests discussion and possible approval of a contract between Apache County Emergency Management and Access Professional Interpreting to be in compliance with Senate Bill twelve ninety-six, which amends ARS Title Nine, Title Eleven, and Title Forty-One, stating that government communications and messaging will reach the entire community, including the deaf and hard of hearing. This agreement will allow us to provide interpreting services when we have emergency meetings held at a facility that don't have the capability of providing for the deaf and hard of hearing, and also provide us for language interpreters at locations when needed, and we would request approval.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Supervisor Shirley, second by Sims Hauser. Any further discussions? See none, hear none. I'll call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item Fourteen, Probation Services.
Good morning, Chairman Shepard.
Morning, sir.
Vice Chair Shirley and Supervisor Sims Hauser. This is discussion and possible approval to change two of our vacant detention officer one positions to surveillance officer two positions, which is range thirty-four, effective July first, twenty eighteen, and this will have no effect on the county budget.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move, we approve.
Supervisor Shirley, second by Sims Hauser. Okay, any further discussions, comments, questions? See none, hear none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, three in favor. All right. County Manager, Item Fifteen?
Yes, gentlemen, this is a discussion and possible approval of a new liquor license application recommendation by Fort Gregory Harvey at Snow Mountain Lodge, LLC, Doing Businesses Omnivores Eatery, located at thirty-eight seven twenty-one State Route, three seventy-three in Greer, Arizona, and we have received no objections to this. Would recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Sims Hauser motions. Second?
Second.
Supervisor Shirley seconds. Any further discussions, comments? See none, hear none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. Item Sixteen, County Manager?
Yes, gentlemen, this is, we do this annually, this discussion and possible adoption of a resolution declaring recognition of fallen firefighters and the emergency service personnel in observing the first Saturday in October to honor patriotic service. The resolution recognizes those individuals, and it says, whereas the United States Congress and the President of the United States have designated the day of the annual National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service as a day to honor firefighters and emergency service personnel who have sacrificed their lives to save others by lowering the American flag on all federal buildings to half-staff. And whereas the average of eighty firefighters courageously make the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty each year, including nineteen firefighters who lost their lives during the Yarnell Hill Fire in Arizona on June thirtieth, twenty thirteen, whereas the events of September eleventh, two thousand and one brought national attention to the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices faced by fire and emergency services personnel on a daily basis. Whereas the Rodeo Cheddis Sky and Wallow, Cedar Creek, Rattlesnake Fires brought awareness of the local sacrifice, hazards, duties, and responsibilities that we, as a community, face, and those faced by emergency responders. And whereas firefighters and emergency services personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in a local community, and the national, whereas the National Moral Service marks the beginning of the annual Fire Prevention Week observance, and whereas it's a major importance to our increase, our efforts to reduce death, injury, and property loss from fire. Be it therefore resolved, that the Board of Supervisors of Apache County, Arizona, now calls upon all citizens of Apache County and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations in Apache County to observe the first Saturday in October, October sixth, twenty eighteen, in recognition of the, of the patriotic service and dedicated efforts of our fire and emergency service personnel by lowering the American flag at all buildings at half-staff.
Okay. And we'll go to there. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for adoption of the resolution?
So moved.
So moved by Supervisor Sims Hauser. Is there a second?
Second.
Supervisor Shirley. Questions, comments? Hear none, see none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Item Seventeen, District Two, Mr. Freeland?
Morning, Mr. Supervisor, or Mr. Chair and Supervisors. Number seventeen is our continued restructuring of District Two to maximize and make our operations more efficient in utilizing staff in the fullest capacity that they can provide services to our district. Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Freeland. Is there a motion?
I'll move. Prove.
Supervisor Sims Hauser, approves. Second by Supervisor Shirley. Thank you, gentlemen. With that, if there are any questions, comments? Hear none, see none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Freeland. Item Eighteen, Communications?
Gentlemen, the Communications Department is looking to enter into a phone system maintenance contract with a continuant. This will save the county seven thousand dollars a year.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, thank you. With that, Supervisors?
Move, we approve.
Supervisor Shirley, second by Supervisor Sims Hauser. Okay, any further discussions, questions? See none, hear none. Call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Item Nineteen, Mr. Gwynn?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, District Three has discussion and possible approval grant agreement number WBBI seventeen dash six zero one between Apache County and the Department of Forestry and Forest Management for Bart Beatle management in the Chapachi subdivision in Alpine, Arizona, and-
Okay. All right, gentlemen, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Supervisor Sims Hauser.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. Any further questions, comments? Hear none, see none. Call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, three in favor. Item Twenty, District Three, Mr. Gwynn?
Item Twenty is a discussion approval of grant agreement WFHF fourteen dash two eleven between Apache County and the Department of Forestry and Fire for fuel treatment removal in the Vernon subdivision area.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sims Hauser motions. Second?
Second.
Supervisor Shirley. Okay, any further discussions? See none, hear none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. District Three, Item Twenty-one?
Item Twenty-one is a approval of a crew use agreement, which will allow us to use the state forestry's DOC crews in these treatment projects in the Vernon area.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Sims Hauser motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Supervisor Shirley, seconds. Any further discussions, questions? Hear none, see none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Item Twenty, Item Twenty-two?
Item Twenty-two is discussion and approval of a agreement with the Vernon Fire District to use a fire, a crew from them, similar to the DOC crew, under this wildfire fuels reduction grant in the Vernon area.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Sims Hauser motions.
Second.
Supervisor Shirley seconds. Further discussion? Hear none, see none. Call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, it's unanimous. Item Twenty-three, Mr. County Manager, do we have any call to the publics?
Chairman, at this time, we do not.
All right. With that, gentlemen, I guess we-
Chairman, just one quick thing, just a reminder that the next board meeting will be in Chinley.
Okay. All right. Next month's meeting will be in Chinley. With that, if there aren't any other, we've disclosed of our agenda items. We're down to our adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Sims Hauser motions. Second?
Second.
Supervisor Shirley seconds. With that, gentlemen, thank you for joining us today. We'll call for the question for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. We are officially adjourned at nine twenty-one.